Yes, good morning. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Lopez joining us shortly.
And are there any additions or corrections for closed session?
No additions or corrections.
So we're going to call for closed sessions, items 1A through 1B. Is there any public comment? Public comment and then we will recess for closed session and return about 10:30.
You guys want to make that permanent for the rest of the year?
Depends on the AC.
Okay.
Good morning. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, let the record reflect all supervisors are present.
Thank you. And we've got the Spanish interpreter services, Diego.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Eres intérprete español-inglés, inglés-español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, habla lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. For the Pledge of Allegiance, Supervisor asks you, would you care to lead us? Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under love and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, do we have any additions or corrections?
We do. There is a correction to item number two under ceremonial resolutions for Star Howard. We have received a revised ceremonial resolution. And secondly, there is a correction to item number 10 under ceremonial resolutions, Safe Ag Schools Coalition. We have also received a revised ceremonial resolution.
Thank you. And let's see, we have today quite a number of resolutions from two to 12. Is there any public comment on any of these? I see none.
No.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one of them be presented. Supervisor Lahe.
Thank you. There's only one resolution today. That's a rare occasion at the Board of Supervisors. But it is my honor to call up Lori Medina, the Director of Department of Social Services, and Annette Gallegos, Assistant Deputy Director of Community Benefits, to honor our person being recognized today, Star Howard, Program Manager Two, for her dedicated service of 40 years to the County of Monterey Department of Social Services on her retirement. So before I pass the mic to your esteemed colleagues here, I just wanted to read so that the public and her family could read some of her accomplishments. She announced her, Star Howard, announced her retirement from public service as a Program Manager Two for the Department of Social Services effective September 14, 2024. Star Howard has been serving the people of Monterey County for 40 years, having been hired on September 14, 1984. I'm trying to think back where I was back in 1984. In the Community Benefits Branch as an Eligibility Worker One in the King City office, promoted to Eligibility Worker Two in 1989 to the Salinas office, and then promoted to Eligibility Supervisor. From there, Star Howard was promoted to the Position of Management Analyst Two and Three, and then promoted to Program Manager Two in 2010 and in the Community Benefits Branch of the Department of Social Services. Star has served as an interim Deputy Director of Community Benefits Branch on July 6, 2019 through two periods in 2019. And she was key in developing our same-day service process for the intake operations with expedited benefits for all public assistance programs. She coordinated with the Adult Services Branch to launch our department's supplemental security income advocacy program, generating reimbursements to our county. And she was selected as Community Benefits Mobile Team Supervisor. She was also the first MC Choice Outreach Coordinator. As such, she led this team in expanding outreach services throughout our county, and the program was awarded the National Hunger Champions Award for innovative outreach program. So today, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and all our residents, we congratulate Star Howard upon her retirement and wish her success, good health, and happiness in all of her future endeavors. So if you give a big round of applause, we're going to present this to you. And then we're going to pass the mic to first, your department lead, Lori Medina.
Thank you. I just wanted to say truly it's an honor to congratulate you. Forty years is quite a milestone. And since the day I started at Social Services, I knew Star's name. I teased her when I was walking up the walk today and said, "Here is the star of the show." So not only is her name a star, but certainly the qualities that she has embodies that. She's been a true leader in the department. People look at you with a lot of regard. And so we just wanted to thank you for all of your many years of service, your long hours. You fight the good fight all the time. And we notice and we appreciate it, and we wish you much luck.
You guys want to make that permanent for the rest of the year? Good morning. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, let the record reflect, all supervisors are present.
Thank you. And we've got the Spanish interpreter services, Diego.
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Eres intérprete español-inglés, inglés-español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio intérprete, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. For the pledge of allegiance, a supervisor asks you, would you care to lead us? Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under love and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, do we have any additions or corrections?
We do. There is a correction to item number two under ceremonial resolutions for Star Howard. We have received a revised ceremonial resolution. And secondly, there is a correction to item number 10 under ceremonial resolutions, Safe Ag Schools Coalition. We have also received a revised ceremonial resolution.
Thank you. And let's see, we have today quite a number of resolutions from 2 to 12. Is there any public comment on any of these? I see none. We have a first and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have one of them be presented. Supervisor Alejo.
Thank you. There's only one resolution today. That's a rare occasion at the Board of Supervisors. But it is my honor to call up Lori Medina, the Director of Department of Social Services, and Annette Gallegos, Assistant Deputy Director of Community Benefits, to honor our person being recognized today, Star Howard, Program Manager 2, for her dedicated service of 40 years to the County of Monterey Department of Social Services on her retirement. So before I pass the mic to your esteemed colleagues here, I just wanted to read so that the public and her family could read some of her accomplishments. She announced her, Star Howard announced her retirement from public service as a Program Manager 2 for the Department of Social Services effective September 14th, 2024. Star Howard has been, served the people of Monterey County for 40 years, having been hired on September 14th, 1984. I'm trying to think back, where was I back in 1984? In the Community Benefits Branch as an Eligibility Worker 1 in the King City office, promoted to Eligibility Worker 2 in 1989 to the Salinas office, and then promoted to Eligibility Supervisor. From there, Star Howard was promoted to the position of Management Analyst 2 and 3, and then promoted to Program Manager 2 in 2010 and all the community, and in the Community Benefits Branch of the Department of Social Services. Star has served as an interim Deputy Director of Community Benefits Branch on July 6th, 2019 through two periods in 2019. And she was key in developing our same-day service process for the intake operations with expedited benefits for all public assistance programs. She co-coordinated with the Adult Services Branch to launch our department's supplemental security income advocacy program, generating reimbursements to our county. And she was selected as Community Benefits Mobile Team Supervisor. She was also the first MC Choice Outreach Coordinator. As such, she led this team in expanding outreach services throughout our county, and the program was awarded the National Hunger Champions Award for Innovative Outreach Program. So today, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and all our residents, we congratulate Star Howard upon her retirement and wishes her success, good health, and happiness in all of her future endeavors. So if you give a big round of applause, we're going to present this to you. And then we're going to pass the mic to first, your department lead, Lori Medina.
Thank you. I just wanted to say truly, it's an honor to congratulate you. Forty years is quite a milestone. And so, and since the day I started at Social Services, I knew Star's name. I teased her when I was walking up the walk today and said, here is the star of the show. So not only is her name a star, but certainly her, the qualities that she has embodies that. She's been a true leader in the department. People look at you with a lot of regard. And so, we just wanted to thank you for all of your many years of service, your long hours. You fight the good fight all the time, and we notice and we appreciate it. And we wish you much luck and good fortune in your future endeavors. So I'm going to pass it over to our colleague, Annette Gallegos, who is our Assistant Deputy Director in the Community Benefits Branch.
I wanted to congratulate Star in her achievement of 40 years. But I also wanted to highlight some of the things that she has done. So in her role as a medical analyst, she actually implemented our 1931B program and went around with her training for everyone. In CalWork, she also did our time limits, worked in foster care, and was a champion for our outreach, really, team, which was really the initiation of that program in our branch, in our department. And along the way, she has really done an outstanding job in inspiring others. So today, I wanted to share an email we received because it speaks way better than I could ever do to really, so I hope I have a couple of minutes to read this. So it says, hello, my name is Jessica Ruiz, and I'm a former Department of Social Services employee. I am composing this email following the news of the retirement of Community Benefits Program Manager Star Howard. Mrs. Howard's retirement announcement email, I understand she shared a few names of those she stated supported and shaped her career. Considering the long-term career held by Mrs. Howard in DSS, I wonder if any of the individuals she mentioned were still around to read her email or to truly understand the depth of impact they made for her, so much so that they were included in the department email. Having shared these thoughts, it was essential for me to share a little bit about the role Mrs. Howard played in shaping of my career to capture my appreciation in the present time. I began my career in DSS as an Office Assistant 2 in Community Benefits in September 2016 at 23. Much younger and highly ambitious, I constantly asked for additional work and learning opportunities. Star Howard was my Program Manager and presented me with these additional learning opportunities. I spent a few months working out of class as an Office Assistant 3 and was promoted to Eligibility Specialist and was the only worker sent to intake following the training unit, one of my favorite positions. Sharing this part of my career growth seems simple now, but when I think back on the journey, including the times I did not pass the Eligibility Specialist test and felt so incapable, felt very different back then. Along the way, Mrs. Howard constantly validated my work as appropriate, highlighting my strengths, challenging me to set long-term career goals, something no one had ever done, nor had I thought of, providing constructive feedback and in more straightforward terms, just teaching me to believe in myself. I continued to plug away and made sure to always ask questions, as Ms. Howard would always say to do. Mrs. Howard continued to perhaps unknowingly inspire my career growth. She often spoke of the department's mission and serving others to great pride and humility. In search to serve our community in a different capacity, I decided to pursue a career in social work. And in 2002, I was promoted to Social Worker 2, 1, with Aging and Adults. Four months later, Social Worker 3 with the Health Department. I went down the rabbit hole of a social worker, returned to school, and basically she got her degree. And while completing my undergraduate degree, I remained employed full-time, juggled my personal life, including other things in her life which were difficult. Mrs. Howard may not be aware of how deeply she instilled a high work ethic in me, which she led by example. Or again, more said, the lesson to follow through whatever you are presented with, with your best foot forward and total effort. But also, Ms. Howard was tough, and just seeing her down a hallway immediately prompted me to sharpen my appearance and to keep it real. So a little about her email, but it really does speak about how inspirational you are to a lot of employees that we have had through the years. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. This is an amazing acknowledgement. I cannot believe it's been 40 years. I am so grateful for being able to serve Monterey County. And I remember you, Supervisor Alejo, back when we were at, doing outreach in Santa Cruz. And so that was a long time ago. And Supervisor Lopez, he is from King City also, and play, him and his brother play for my husband. So a lot of years. I am so grateful to be part of Monterey County and the community. And I think, for me, the most important thing is to keep the mission going and serving the public. And I also want to congratulate Lori Medina on her upcoming retirement. And so we've had some great directors in the department. And so, you know, we've all left our legacy, and we hope that others that come after us will continue to serve Monterey County. I did my best. Forty years went by fast, and I look forward to spending a lot of time with my family, going to football games. Go Steelers! I'm still the Steeler fan. I had to represent today where my Steelers, right? And, and everybody, blessings to everybody and be safe. Thank you again for the acknowledgement.
Thank you very much. Before we take a picture, Ms. Howard, we want to just say, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, thank you. Forty years is a lifetime. And as we often say, the greatest calling for our careers is in public service because it's all about serving others. So over 40 years, you've served so many families. You've served your coworkers, as it just was eloquently read by one of your colleagues. You've inspired so many people. So this is a bittersweet moment. We can't ask anymore from you because you've given it all in service to the people of Monterey County. You've done so exceptionally well. You left the Monterey County better than when you started 40 years ago. So with that, we want to say thank you very much. Muchas gracias. All right.
Congratulations. Happy retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your long service to the people of Monterey County. If that will move on to appointments, we have two appointments. Is there any public comment on these appointments?
With approval of appointments.
First, second. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there any items from the board members that would like to poll or discuss? Just for just comments or to poll vote separate?
Just comments.
Okay. Which item? I'm sorry, which one?
33 and 30.
Okay, 33 and 30. Anybody else? I also wanted to poll on 30, and I want them to comment on 31. So let me just go to the public here first, if there's anybody in the public that wishes to comment on the consent calendar. I see nobody. Supervisor ask you?
Okay, so I'll start with item number 30, which is our draft proposed 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule. And I just wanted to note that I have a couple conflicts that we can sort out at a future date, but as we go to approve it, April 15th and February 18th, we have school break scheduled. So I plan on spending time with my family those weeks. And then on July 15th, I think that date conflicts potentially with the NACO conference in Philadelphia. So I'm not sure the exact scheduling of that, but just putting that out there.
So I wonder, I was, my comment was going to be how the change in the summer schedule adjusted with everybody. And I'm kind of wondering maybe if we should maybe move it up a week and take the, that's what, yeah.
That's what I wanted to share, because, not only because of the NACO, but it seemed like if we were moving earlier in July, it seemed to work better. Had that meeting perhaps right after 4th of July, but then starting our summer, three weeks of summer recess earlier is what would be my suggestion.
Would be the, then we would have the last meeting being the 8th, correct?
Yes.
How does the rest of the board feel about this?
I think it's great.
Very moves. So when we look at the schedule, you know, in this moment, I'm trying to remember, we were trying to keep a balance of making sure we didn't have extremely large chunks where we didn't have meetings and making sure there was, yeah, some trade-offs. So I did take all the input from everybody and come up with this particular piece. We can move this, but understand that it might create a window where we don't have a meeting for an extended period. And so I, I'm fine with that, but I tried to balance all the asks and those expectations of continuing to meet so we don't end up with extremely long agendas.
There still would be that three-week break we've had in between there, which is, you know, it's going to be the next year's chair, so I'm not really concerned.
Sounds like it's a four to one. No, I'm seriously fine with it. Just know that it will impact the workload in those shoulder weeks.
It'd be great, great to see, because I think we haven't had it earlier in July for some time, to see how it works this next year, and if it creates problem, maybe adjust the following year. But it'd be nice to try it for this coming year.
I think especially since there's the NACO conference.
And we're going to miss it anyways.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's right. I'm going to miss it anyway, so I have a board member, I may not even have a quorum that day.
Exactly.
Exactly. Okay, do we, do we need to make a motion on this, or? We already went to public comment for generally on consent calendar. Do we have to come back?
And then I wanted to comment on 32.
Okay, 32.
32 is in your district, Mr. Chair, but these issues about Las Lomas infrastructure came up a long time ago when Simon was, Salinas was still on this board. And, and I just wanted to comment on that because this is a three-point, almost $3.5 million project. It's not everything, but it's another investment in another disadvantaged community. So I just wanted to highlight that. I thank the staff for doing this. This is for bike and pedestrian improvements. You know, it's a very busy road, hall road that goes right through Las Lomas. So before, it was about sidewalks and some streetlights. These are other investments. So I just want to commend our staff for, for moving this forward, and I strongly support those investments in these communities that have been neglected for too long.
I, I would agree with that. I was going to make a slight comment on it, that we still have 30 we're kind of talking about. But I agree, it's, it's really good to have that development of sidewalks, and they really need to go further up. Las Lomas Drive, as I had learned when I was out campaigning a few years ago, people drive like crazy down there, and there's kids walking on that road, and it's just really dangerous. But counsel, you were going to give a suggestion on, do we need a motion on changing this?
I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar with an amendment to number 30.
Well, I think we're, okay, so 30 would be to move the, the start of the summer break
Correct.
up a week. Right.
Is that your Christmas break, just given the?
I don't get a Christmas break, really. Yes, supervisor? 43? 33, okay. So I just want, I want to make sure we've got 30 completely covered here. So, so we're going to be good then, that we're going to make that amendment so that when we go to, once we get to motion there, okay. Yeah, go ahead. You have 43?
Yeah, sorry, just to clarify. So for 30, for 30, we're taking off the July 15th meeting, but we're adding back the August 5th. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So we're replacing July 15th with August 5th to keep that gap the same three weeks? Okay, just, we're clear on that. And then just a note that I may have conflicts on the 18th of February and the 15th of April. Okay, and then on item 33, this is a contract for our master facilities plan, which we approved funding for in our last year's budget. This is to create an initial facilities master plan covering a certain number of our county facilities to help us guide use of our real estate portfolio, as well as plan for the development of future facilities, and potentially identify surplus lands that we can utilize for other purposes. My question was specifically, I guess I had thought that the master facilities plan, or would like to see the master facilities plan include at least a very brief overview of all of the county-owned properties that we have, so that we have a sense of the full portfolio of county property. This particular plan doesn't identify the coastal offices building that we have, where my office is. It doesn't identify the bunker properties that the county owns on Fort Ord. I don't think it identifies the ag commissioner's building. So I know that those are the ones that I know that we have ownership of, but I think even if we're not going to go into the level of detail that the other properties that are identified, I think it's important that through this process, we're able to get sort of a broad picture of all of the county-owned properties that exist, because some of those things do have pieces that move around, and identifying all of those spaces could be important. So just, I think the scope on this particular contract, I would just ask staff to take a closer look at it and maybe bring it back with a broadened concept. So I, maybe, and I don't know if staff wants to comment on that. I don't know if we gave anyone a heads up on this.
Lindsay's on.
Lindsay, if you can comment on this, in terms of what is included as a scope of work and whether or not a recap of existing county-owned locations, even those that are potentially not going to warrant any improvements, but just to have a recap of all county-owned properties.
And John Snidely.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. I'll actually defer that to John Snidely, as he has been taking the lead on the contract, and we can kind of go over the revised scope.
Yes, just quickly, thank you Supervisor Ruth Askew, John Snidely with Public Works Facilities and Parks. Although the initial scope does cover those specific locations, and that's, that's related to the funding request that was made in the CIP, where we looked for amount of money we figured, we thought that we could get from the available budget to cover those locations. However, we do have the flexibility to expand that scope, to add locations as needed, to review the, what we're going to look at. So thankfully, we are within the funding that we have, and we can look at how much money we have to add those additional services as you requested.
Okay, and I, it's a for my colleagues too. I mean, if we only want to look, do it. I think, when I think about a facilities master plan, I'm thinking like, we need, I'm looking for sort of that big picture, all of our locations. We've had, you know, different sites come up on sort of one-off referrals for consideration, but I'd really love to get sort of the broad picture. And then if there's some facilities, we want to go deeper on, understanding what their utilization and long-term planning are. So I would like to add that we, ask that we add that to this particular contract.
My question would be, is that going to change the cost of the project, of the, this whole scope? Can that be done with the 525, or I think that's what it is in here?
The initial quote in the 525 is for that set of facilities that we looked at as an initial stage. We certainly envisioned this project to be ongoing and encompass all county properties. We're trying to take a bite of it as we can, so that was the approach. However, we take this feedback, and we can certainly look at that. But there would definitely be a cost increase to either change the scope or expand the scope of the, of the work that we're looking at today.
And I would add, good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors Florence Cablasa-Green, interim Chief of Facilities. I would add that as part of the contract, we're going to have a kickoff stage where we're going to have some strategy sessions to look at these very questions, you know, refine the scope. And we certainly can look at the additional items that you have requested and see how we can fit, how that can fit with the proposed scope that we have now, and come back to you if we think there'll be any additional costs. But at this point, it's planned to kind of review, do a refresh review of the overall scope and timeline.
Okay, so given that feedback, I'm happy to approve this today, and then just ask if that is something that, you know, maybe we're scaling back down on some portion of it in order to scale up to have that full picture of all county-owned assets.
And I just comment on, on item number 31 on here, which I started to read through on the ordinance for, we have for parks on behavior and permits as allowed. And I noticed there on towards the end, there was actually a limitation on, on, on noise from devices like radios, which doesn't always match up, I don't think, with what we're doing and other things in the county. It's basically was saying that in a park, you can't have a, an amplified device that exceeds 50 decibels from 50 feet away. And one, there might be a little problem with that, because I think that's even lower than, than a normal conversation. So I don't know how you would measure it. But the larger picture, I just think Supervisor, I know Lopez and I are on an ad hoc committee on this, is that I think maybe it would require just taking a look at some of our broader noise ordinance in the county and what we're requiring in parks and construction and wherever else that would go on. So I'm just bringing that up as a comment. Are we done with comments and ready to approve then, the consent? If we can make a motion with that scheduling change?
A second, thanks.
And to clarify, that moves our, our last meeting to July 8th, and the next one then on August 5th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll move to general public comments. We'll move to general public comments. Our item is not on today's agenda. Do we have anybody in the chambers that would like to address this? If you have a comment, you have two minutes.
And this is to the chairperson, Wendy Ashers, and to the board, I'm Thelma McIntosh. And this is regarding my son, Terrence Vaughn, who's down at Seal of Vista in Greenfield. And he's been down there almost four years. Shouldn't be. But I have a true concern this morning about the new conservator, Kristy Savignan Oakley, who was his conservator, and she's retired now. And Dennis Cortez has taken over. But he hasn't been very nice to us since he's taken it over and just very negative and everything. The new conservatorship was renewed January of this year, January 19th. He didn't contact us until March, almost two months more. And when he did, he was just very negative and I don't know how to describe it. I will try to get along with him because that's what I do. I'm in ministry myself and I like to be peaceful and everything. But he just had a negative attitude about my son and myself. And he never would agree to meet with me, to even discuss things that we really need to talk about. And he said, well, parents don't have any rights to be involved. I've been involved 25 years with my son with behavioral health. And I'm his mentor and advocate and I've traveled to all these places and speak for him and things. So I'm really concerned about his attitude. And so I left six messages for him and then he wouldn't return my calls, but he did. He just said.
Thank you. Your time is up there if you want to wrap up your comment.
Oh, okay. But anyway, I would like to change conservators because I can't get, at least he was not cooperative at all.
Thank you. The CAO Sonia Della Rosa will take some information from you here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else in the chambers that would like to speak? Do we have anybody online?
CCA Center for Community Advocacy.
Yes, you have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, um, I am concerned about the development of county lands. Right now, we are in a climate crisis and there's a lot of fires all over California right now. And we really need to look at how to conserve as much land as possible because conserving land will conserve life here. Secondly, I am concerned about the pesticide usage all over the county and that it's really not being regulated and that in this county, we're using far more pesticides than we are that are even allowed in most counties and in the rest of the world and how this is affecting our water supply and our air supply and what this Board of Supervisors is doing, looking to do to actually help the residents here in regards to the wide use of pesticides. And then finally, I'd like to mention that there's been a lot of increase in traffic in the area and that's a lot to do with the development. And a lot of the roads are being used as cut-throughs and shortcuts. And out on Paradise Road in Pruneda, California, for example, and Castro Boulevard, people are regularly speeding and driving recklessly. There's bottles being thrown out of people's cars, alcohol bottles. There's animals being hit on a regular basis. These roads shouldn't be used as cut-throughs. We really need to look at how we can lower the speed limits and have more enforcement so that people aren't driving through our roads like raceways. And this is a beautiful county that we live in and the humans aren't the only ones here. There's a lot of wildlife here that we have to preserve. As things are getting hotter, we have to think about everything that's affecting us and the cars, the pesticides, the development of the land.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. We have nobody else on. Okay, with that, we will close public comment and move to a scheduled matter, which is number 17, a presentation on the homeless strategies and initiatives.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the board. My name is Roxanne Wilson and I'm the County Homeless Services Director. With me is Cindy Georgia, who is one of the management analysts in my office. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present to you our accomplishments and initiatives since the creation of this office since 2022. Next slide. There you go. I'd like to revisit some of the key historical moments that led to the creation of the County Administrative Offices Homelessness Strategies and Initiatives Division. In 2017, the State of California's homelessness point in time count revealed a significant increase in homelessness. In response, Governor Brown and the state legislature introduced funding through the homeless emergency aid program, also known as HEAP, under SB 850, available to communities that declared an emergency shelter crisis. Beginning in 2019, state legislators introduced a series of bills that restructured the housing, mental health, and homelessness response systems. These legislative efforts were supported by unprecedented state investments aimed at improving the effectiveness of said systems. And in 2021, Supervisor Alejo submitted referral number 2021.23, which eventually led to the creation of the County Homeless Services Director position. And on July 18, 2022, I had the privilege of joining the county to serve our community in this role. The core functions of my office, as described in the job description, are planning and implementation, working with departments and other jurisdictions to develop a comprehensive response to homelessness, develop and align policies within the county organization, management and evaluation of our homelessness response, and develop partnerships and alliances throughout our community. It is my hope that by the end of this presentation, I am able to demonstrate the value of our service to the community and provide an overview of how we are actively working to serve our most vulnerable population. Over the past year, I have focused on building a strong team with skills and expertise needed to support the work of my office. Sarah Federico, who joined my office in December 2023, primarily assists with grants and contract management. She brings prior experience in the, from working in the county's former resource management agency and also the Health Department. Cindy Georgia, to my right, joined our team in April of this year, focusing on the stepping up initiatives, strategic planning, and CalAim implementation strategies. She also has a background with the Health Department. And next month, we welcome Danya Valdez, who currently works in the District Attorney's Office. Danya's main role will be to enhance public communications and engagement, and she will also serve as backup for the contracts and grants. The upcoming slides will highlight some of the projects that our office is either leading or supporting. The first initiative is a 34-bed non-congregate low-barrier navigation center being developed in partnership with the County of Santa Cruz on Westview Presbyterian property in Watsonville. This facility will initially serve individuals who are living along the Paharo River, covering areas within the jurisdictions of Monterey County, Santa Cruz County, and the city of Watsonville. Both counties' Boards of Supervisors approved a memorandum of understanding reflecting the highly collaborative nature of this project. What makes this partnership particularly unique is the balanced approach between the two counties. Since the project will serve Monterey County residents, we secured $8 million in state funding and are responsible for developing the site. Once the development stage is complete, the County of Santa Cruz will take over and assume responsibility for securing the sustainable funding. It's also important to highlight that the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors has adopted a plan to develop a low-barrier navigation center in the southern part of their county. So both counties are equal beneficiaries to this partnership. This project puts people first by addressing the service gaps caused by county borders, which have historically made service delivery fragmented and ineffective. I would like to acknowledge and commend the County of Santa Cruz's staff, particularly Dr. Robert Ratner and Carlos Nuneo, for their remarkable contributions throughout this process. I would also like to extend our gratitude to the Central California Alliance on Health and the Leadership Council for Monterey and San Benito Counties, who have also committed financial investments to this very important project. And it's no secret that South County is a huge service desert and people who wanted services would have to travel to places like Salinas, Marina, or Monterey. However, many people don't want to leave their home community where they have connections to families and friends, or maybe they work or go to school. Or maybe they just don't want to live in a larger city where they don't know or trust anyone. Over the past few years, we started to see unsheltered homelessness grow in rural areas of the county, especially near the cities of Solidad and King. During the January storms of 2023, the Salinas River swelled, putting the homeless encampment near Solidad completely underwater. When the water receded, trash and debris either swept down the river or rotted in place. And although there have been repeated efforts for trash and debris removal in the area, city and county staff agreed that we should focus on a more proactive approach by creating an opportunity for the clients to break the cycle of homelessness. And earlier this year, our division secured over $4 million in state funding to build a 14-bed non-congregate low-barrier navigation center that will be built on city-owned property. And we are also providing an outreach worker position to the city. This temporary tiny village will serve members of the encampment that spans over city, county, and Caltrans jurisdictions along the Salinas River right outside of Solidad. And this partnership includes City Manager Megan Hunter, the Solidad Police Chief, and of course, Beatrice from Housing and Community Development. Our division pursued and was awarded over eight, I'm sorry, $6 million in state funding to develop a permanent supportive housing project for the former encampment occupants of the Salinas River near King City. We are actively working with local organizations and have built up over $16 million in braded funding that will be used for different components of this entire project, which includes an interim shelter where clients are currently staying and acquisition, construction, operations, and services for the permanent supportive housing project. This encampment became a high priority after the King City fire, where an unhoused individual unfortunately lost his life, and several young children were identified to be living in the encampment. City Manager Steve Adams personally worked to get all of the children safely indoors and has been an incredible partner and more than anything, a leader in this space. I also wanted to highlight that the Housing Authority of the County of Monterey has a major role as they will serve as the owner and developer of the permanent supportive housing project. And of course, Central California Alliance on Health matched the county's acquisition and construction investment of almost $6 million. In 2022, County HCD was awarded $2 million in federal earmark funds to establish a youth campus. And our office partnered with HCD, the Housing Authority, and the City of Solidad to develop a drop-in center for transition-aged youth using a portion of those funds. Our division co-authored a federal grant application where $2.1 million of renewable youth homelessness demonstration funding was awarded to the Housing Authority. Eligible youth in South County will soon have access to receive housing-related services, including three years of rental subsidies, deposit assistance, childcare stipends, housing navigation, and so much more. The other project we are working on that will be funded with the $2 million earmark is the purchase of four townhomes in Solidad that will serve permanent, as permanent supportive housing for pregnant and parenting youth with a preference for those who are aging out of foster care. And finally, the capital improvements plan included the development of a recuperative care program on county property. This 10-12 unit non-congregate facility will serve unhoused individuals who are being discharged from Natividad Hospital yet still require a level of medical care. On average, recuperative care programs result in a 28% reduction in hospital stays for chronically homeless individuals and can reduce healthcare costs by nearly $37,000 per person per year. This project is in the early planning stages and is being led by the Health Department. However, our office is partnering to develop the programmatic components, which includes referrals, operational plans, program guidelines, and policies and procedures. We are in discussions with the Department of Social Services to establish a relationship between the Share Center and the Recuperative Care Center to ensure we maximize the county's Next, we will review the efforts of our office in the areas of policy development, evaluation, and planning. We are all aware of the recent Supreme Court ruling in Grants Pass versus Johnson, which effectively overturned Martin versus Boise and granted local jurisdictions the authority to clear homeless encampments, even in the absence of available shelter beds. In response to this ruling, Governor Gavin Newsom swiftly issued executive order N117 directing state agencies to clear unsafe encampments on state right-of-ways. He also encouraged counties to develop similar policies for addressing unsafe encampments in our public lands within our jurisdiction. And to that end, our division has been collaborating with county departments and the sheriff's office to co-author an encampment response policy. This policy is set to be presented to the Homelessness Committee in November and we plan to bring it before the board for your consideration of approval in December. Alongside these policies, we intend to propose a resolution for the board to consider as well, committing the county to follow best practices in addressing homelessness and continually working to improve services within our community. The third component of this encampment response is to develop a public complaint interface allowing community members to report unsafe encampments. Under the proposed policies, county departments will collaborate to determine the appropriate level of response and while also partnering with community-based organizations to ensure that those who are living in encampments are provided with services. While this approach mirrors our current practices for handling encampments, formalizing these procedures into policy will ensure consistency moving forward. In April 2019, the Board of Supervisors passed the Stepping Up Resolution, joining a national movement to reduce the number of people in jail who have mental illness and/or substance use disorder. And in 2023, our division took on the leadership of the Stepping Up Initiative, organizing monthly steering committees, conducting research, and facilitating coordination efforts. The steering committee serves as, I'm sorry, the steering committee consists of our office, the district attorney, Health Department, Sheriff's Office, Superior Court, probation, public defenders, and the Military and Veterans Affairs Office. The board can expect an update on the Stepping Up Initiative in the upcoming months. As mentioned earlier, we hired a management analyst who will be working on strategic planning and CalAim implementation. For CalAim, we are drafting a scope of work for a consultant to help us evaluate if the county is effectively utilizing this new resource in our homelessness. county is effectively utilizing this new resource in our homelessness response. In general, we are looking for recommendations on how the county can leverage resources from CAL-AIM and build up our community programs. So that part is an internal evaluation. We are also looking externally to see if and how the county can assist the homeless service provider network with CAL-AIM implementation. Once we roll out the CAL-AIM planning process, we will then pivot to a larger strategic plan that will assess the county's current homelessness response investments, the performance of county-funded or county-owned programs, evaluates our interdepartmental and interagency response, and provides recommendations to improve our performance. And lastly, we are partnering with the Department of Social Services and the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers to standardize our contract monitoring and develop a policy and procedure for evaluating program performance of state-funded, county, and COC-administered programs. Because we all receive homelessness housing assistance and prevention funding, also known as HHAP, which also coincidentally has the same requirements as the encampment resolution funding, we are looking to align our procedures to reduce the administrative burden for our nonprofit organizations and to ensure a cohesive voice on expectations when it comes to performance. The final portion of our presentation focuses on other ways that homelessness strategies and initiatives is collaborating with stakeholders while increasing awareness and communication. You may have heard of the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness or the California Interagency Council on Homelessness. I am proud to report that our division has created the Monterey County Interdepartmental Committee on Homelessness, where departments across the county, including the Sheriff's Office, meet regularly to break down silos, increase communication, and collaboration. I just want to pause here because I'm so proud of the number of attendees that come to this meeting. On average, it's between 30 to 40 individuals representing many different departments within the county, and it continues to grow. So there certainly is an interest for more collaboration between our departments. Our division is motivated to increase awareness of the issues surrounding homelessness and how the county is working to address it. This includes the development of a website where community members will be able to see our project pipeline, seek resources, report an encampment, and review homelessness data. We are actively working with ITD and the Communications Bureau to get the website launched within the next couple of weeks. I also had the pleasure of presenting to the State Budget Subcommittee, where I showcased our successes with state funding and advocated for future rounds of HHAP. This presentation happened after the January proposed budget, where HHAP was not included. But I am happy to report that the final budget included another round, which we so desperately needed. I've also presented at several summits, conferences, and have another scheduled at the County Health Executive Associations of California, Association of California, also known as CHIAC, next week. We co-facilitated four community input sessions in partnership with the Department of Social Services and the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers, and our office has hosted two input sessions on our own. And this is just other collaborative efforts. I currently serve on the inaugural advisory committee for the California Interagency Council on Homelessness, also known as CALIC. I also have served on the State's Committee that informed the study on the efficacy of Project Room Key across the state. Additionally, I contribute to the January and March storms, and I'm an inaugural member of the California Executive Leadership Cohort, which includes leaders of homelessness response systems from the counties of Alameda, Riverside, Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Diego, and also the city of San Jose. The Homelessness Strategies and Initiatives Division is often called upon to convene leaders to solve complex problems within our community. An example of this is our involvement in relocating clients who are being displaced from one of the Salinas Home Key projects. Our efforts resulted in all of the clients receiving emergency housing homeless set-aside vouchers and increased collaboration amongst key stakeholders. Approximately one-quarter of these clients have been permanently housed already, with about half of the remaining clients on their way. The Department of Social Services, the Health Department, the city of Salinas, and the Housing Authority meet weekly to facilitate the relocation of these clients, most of whom came from the county's Project Room Key. You may recall that Project Room Key was a pandemic response in which the county worked with medical professionals to identify the most medically fragile unhoused clients so we can put them in temporary motel rooms and protect them from contracting COVID-19. Although the Home Key projects are not technically county projects, we continue to partner with our city municipalities to identify resources that will help these projects get back on And that actually concludes my presentation. Thank you again for this opportunity to share how my small but mighty team have been working to address homelessness in Monterey County.
Thank you, Roxanne. Since this is basically a presentation with probably no action, I first just want to go out to see if there's any public comment before I bring it to the board. Is there anybody in the chambers?
Good morning. Name is Eric Peterson. And fortunately, things are getting better in many ways. There's been a lot of progress, but there's a long way to go. Homelessness nationally is getting worse. Homelessness in the state of California is getting worse. And from my unscientific observations, it's getting worse locally. There was a comment in the literature about getting people out of jail. And I've mentioned before Connor Stapleton, whose mother likes it when he's in jail because he's got a roof, and he's got food, and sometimes he gets medical care. And he's a lot better off. He doesn't like it, but it's in his better interest to be in jail. And since he's been arrested, there's 23 cases in Seaside since 2006. He gets his time in jail three times so far this year. It just works for him, unfortunately. I did notice there were quite a few conferences and some degree of bureaucracy here. It might be better to put that money towards shelter, sleeping bags. And we've got a lot of people who need them, and it's really sad. And I'd like to conclude. The VA has made a big deal about all they're doing. That was a few years ago. And if there's any way you could kick them and get them to do a better job, there's a lot of veterans who would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the chambers? Is there anybody online?
CCA Center for Community Advocacy.
Yes, you have two minutes.
Yes, hi. So I think I agree with the gentleman's comments before, and with the homelessness population or unhoused individuals, they are part of our community. And what we need to do too is, any people that have homes available and rooms in their homes, we need to open our homes to the individuals, because a lot of the people living on the streets do have family. And we need to look at how, as a community, we can come together and actually offer help to everybody, especially when we have spaces in our own homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else? Then we shall close public comment. I'll bring it back here to the board. Supervisor Lopez?
Yeah, just one point I want to make sure we touched. It wasn't mentioned, but on that slide about the second project in Solidad, that was federal funding that was earmarked by Senator Padilla. So we want to make sure to thank him for that. It's been almost four years. We've been working to try and to find the right way to invest that money in the community. I think this is a great project to go after. So I just wanted to thank him and his staff for chasing that down and supporting that initiative almost four years ago at this point. But big picture, I think the efforts that are being made, I really want to just thank you, Roxanne, for keeping a broad scope. I know sometimes it's easy to say, well, the biggest population is in one place, we're going to start there. But as we look at equity and wanting to make sure that, as you said, people can be served in the communities that they feel are home, that they know is home, that's a critical component of actually having success. And so by being able to build the relationships with King City and Solidad, and also some of that ancillary relationship building that's going to happen with Greenfield and Gonzalez and those methods, I think we're going to see everybody rise together, and that's what we've been trying to go after. So I appreciate your leadership and your willingness to take these issues on in a way that's constructive, right? Getting through the rhetoric and getting to the point where we're actually trying to put real, material solutions on the ground for community. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Supervisor Alejo?
Yes, thank you, Roxanne, and to your team, first of all. Your presentation reminded me that we made all the right decisions to bring somebody like you with your expertise and your compassion and your talent and bring your other team to help you. Because a lot of things that I've seen, at least in my role as supervisor and as a chair of the Lead Me Home Leadership Council, wouldn't happen without somebody like you being a driving force behind the scene. And we all know this work is not easy. It's very hard. Often I say it's doing God's work, because it takes a record amount of patience and concern and coordination with a lot of different nonprofits, different department heads, like some of your meetings just outlined. But having a key person through our CIO's office that brings the county to the table is a game changer in many conversations, that opens opportunity, opens up more collaboration. And we've had some challenges recently that we're all aware of, but that you're working on, even stuff that wasn't even mentioned on this PowerPoint here. But I just have a few questions. So first of all, I just want to thank you, Roxanne, and I appreciate our county supporting, having this kind of position, because it's really making a difference. And then you working with other departments, whether it's Department of Social Services, Health, Public Facilities. There's so many, Department of Emergency Services, there's a lot of departments that get involved, our sheriffs and others that get involved in these issues. So just on some things, on Solidad, I think two days ago or so, there was a news article that said some of the funding got deferred. I don't know if you saw that or not, but Megan Hunter came on there and said there was a delay, and the state money's coming for that. Are you aware of that?
Yes. Unfortunately, the funding used to sit with CALIC as a department or within the agency. And in June 30th, they had moved the money over to state HCD. So we were aware that there was going to be some delays, but we're very excited because we finally received the state agreement this week.
Okay, great. On another topic, recuperative care. These are for our high-needs patients that often end up in the emergency room. Sometimes they end up at jail. From the jail, they go to the emergency room, and sometimes they come with some serious physical health or mental health conditions. And there seem to be... And you were on this already, when I talked to you, you were already working on it, about needing a place where you put these high-needs patients. Instead of sending them back into a tent or out into the streets, we needed a place for them to be able to get well and have somebody there, health professionals there, providing this care. So this is a project that is planned near the Share Center on one of our vacant properties. I'm supportive of it because I know the need is tremendous. And as your PowerPoint pointed out, it saves the county a lot of money in the long run by having a recuperative care center. And this would be in Salinas. So I thank you for working with the Health Department and others who are involved in this. I think that was great. The other big one is Shangri-La, obviously. That created a major setback for some of our hotel conversions, our Project Home Key projects. The first one was the Good Night Inn. Now that's shutting down as we speak, and residents are having to be relocated. Very unfortunate situation. It seems like we had so much momentum, things were going good, hundreds of more units to house, get people off the streets, and put them into that type of housing. But I know now that one of the hotels is completed, got renovated, they're wanting... The new property owners wanted to put that for its intended use for homeless residents. I know you can't get into too much detail. That wasn't part of your presentation, but I wanted to bring it up because there's litigation against Shangri-La Construction, the project in King City, I think three in Salinas?
Three in Salinas, one in King City.
Three in Salinas, two in Salinas. Because we're talking about, where do we place individuals? That it's so expensive, so difficult to find them housing with these four project hotel conversions or Home Keys, I think we're talking about over 200 units housing. It's significant. So maybe if you want to just talk a little bit about that, I know you can't talk about it too much because you're working on it, but just so that our board and the public know, we're trying to save some of these projects, get them across the finish line, and to be able to utilize them for housing our homeless.
Yeah, so county departments and the Housing Authority and the jurisdictions have been meeting regularly and trying to pull together the funding to essentially save currently two of the Home Keys. It's been... Both of them have... Well, the one in King City just went through the appraisal process, and then one of them in Salinas is currently in the appraisal process. And we are working with the Housing Authority in hopes that they would become the new owners and bringing the projects back to community ownership.
Thank you. And I want to acknowledge you for being key on that, because you really helped bring different resources together to make us have a fighting chance to put those to good public use. Last things I would say, Roxanne, I know we have to defer our homelessness summit to the spring as requested by the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers. That's why our colleagues are not seeing that we're doing one in October, as we've had for the last two years. But the two big issues that I think are on the table for our county, one is the future of Care Court in Monterey County. That's a big, big item that is extending conservatorships for these high-needs people. Where now somebody, usually a family member or a first responder, is under this new law is giving standing to request that these individuals be... Basically, essentially get forced to enter into services through a civil court order. It's a very complex area of law, a lot of constitutional issues, but it's coming, right, for Monterey County. And that's one of those efforts that takes a lot of coordination between the court, social services, I think probation, a lot of departments, and it's very expensive. So I just want to put that on the table, because I mean, that's where we need experts like Roxanne, and I think our other experts in our county, to really think through, how is that going to work in our county? And the last piece was just on accountability. It was a new bill signed by the governor a few days ago. A lot more scrutiny on dollars coming for homelessness to counties and cities and to continuums of care. And so that's another one where we don't know what that means. Is it data reporting, or is it going to be the stick and carrot? The stick where if you're not producing the numbers the state wants to see, do then counties like ours get dinged? Even though we got all these projects moving, we need a continuous flow of funding to keep them going, but if we're not meeting our numbers or expectations, does the state take away our money? And as you know, our point in time count showed that homelessness increased this past year, so that's what has me concerned. And so I just want to put those things on the table because they are ones, issues to look out for this next year, especially with this new law going into place.
Thank you.
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. Well, thanks just so much, honestly. Just thank you, thank you, thank you. I am very proud of this board for choosing to create the County Homeless Services Director position. It was such a huge step forward that not only supports the unincorporated areas of the county, but really has the opportunity, which you have led, to increase collaboration and information sharing across the cities and the other counties in our region. And I thank you, as my colleagues have said, so much, because you came out of your comfort zone to do this, and you just have done such a marvelous, marvelous job. I am just so delighted with this. You know, you and I have crossed paths, you know, over the years, and I'm just very, very delighted with it. I'm proud of you as well for the steps that you're taking to make Monterey County significant in the work to reduce homelessness throughout the state. And your just selfless ability and willingness to participate in additional things beyond what it is that you do all the time is just absolutely valid, and I'm so thankful for that. I have one comment and another question with Care Court. I know that that is complex, and my hope is that we will have not just your leadership in working on that within our own county, because I know that you'll be able, as you have with other things, draw people together to deal with it. But I also hope that we have your perspective on it, and that we, as a board, will be able to hear your perspective on how it's doing so that we might be able to make comments that could lead the state in helping them to figure out how to make it work, how it needs to be tweaked. needs to be tweaked, because it will need some tweaking between now as we move forward with it. But the question that I wanted to ask again goes back to the recuperation, recuperative project. I had the opportunity to visit one in Santa Cruz County that was really impressive, just the small piece of land that they had where they were able to bring homeless people in to recuperate from getting, after, you know, being released from the hospital, what are you going to do? And I heard that that's what we're doing and I'm pleased, but if I, want to make sure I understand this, is this for patients who are coming out of Natividad Hospital only or from Salinas Valley Memorial or Salinas Valley Healthcare and the Community Hospital of Monterey Peninsula?
So, there is a respite center already existing on the peninsula. This one, I think we're deciding to pilot it with Natividad initially because it's clearly a county facility and we just want to make sure that we have all of the workflows ironed out. And I think that there is potential for us to expand to other hospitals in the future. But it is a small number of units. Our consultants say we really need 30 beds, but I don't think we have the space or the bandwidth to accommodate 30, so we're starting off small with the potential to grow.
And are they like little trailers sort of things as they were over in Santa Cruz?
I think I'm starting to become the tiny village master. So, they're modular units. These particular ones will have en suites and they'll be ADA, every single unit will be ADA compliant, but they do give the same privacy as a motel room. But again, it's more control, it's a more controlled space.
Got it.
So, similar to the trailers, but probably more geared towards sheltering.
Got it. And they take up, the sign houses take up less room?
Correct.
Got it, okay, great. Well, again, just thank you so much. I'm very pleased with the report. And I know that it's also so hard to try to come up with, you know, okay, so prove this. And I love it that you just presented everything that's been done. At some point, I hope that we can have metrics so that we have an idea of the numbers of people that have come through our programs and some of the outcomes. I think that would really be great if we can get that in the future as well.
Will do.
Thank you so much.
And Supervisor Adams, I think Elsa Jimenez is having, as part of her conversation on October 8th, on the facility, she'll be talking more about that recuperative care project.
Thank you.
Great presentation and really just the work that you're doing. I can't imagine that there's anyone else that could have stepped in with the context, with the background, with the relationships and just the deep commitment to doing right by our community. Roxanne, thank you so much. We see you, we appreciate you, and I know it hasn't been easy, any day that you've been showing up, it hasn't been easy, but the way that you've navigated so many really big complicated challenges with grace, with just perseverance, it's extraordinary. I can't begin to express my appreciation to you personally. In terms of some of the items that you've presented, thank you for the work on the encampment resolution, or encampment resolution, resolution for us. I shared during the homeless committee meeting, I am deeply concerned with the position that the overturning of grants passed and the governor's directive has put us in. I think that the risk that we run without being proactive is that we're going to find ourselves back in a situation where we have different jurisdictions pushing people from one place to the next. We know that that's one of the most expensive, traumatic, inhumane ways to address the crisis of homelessness. We know it didn't work before, it's not going to work moving forward. And so, anything that we can do as a county to provide some guidance and leadership about how we plan to work in partnership with our cities to continue focusing on the outcome of getting people into safe, stable shelter, I think we are well positioned to be able to provide some guidance and leadership in that space. And I recognize also it's going to require the participation actively of all of our local jurisdictions to engage with us in that conversation. So, thank you for your work on that. In terms of the stepping up initiative, I'm so pleased that you are now, have capacity within your team that you're building to take that on. Cal AIM has some really innovative, new opportunities to utilize funding to meet people where they're at and to get them the care that they need, how and when they need it. So, I think there are opportunities and I'm really excited to hear that we're leaning into that. As you know, our county participates in the five county Central California Alliance for Health, so we actually even have more control locally over how we're utilizing and benefiting from Cal AIM than I think some of the other communities do have. So, I look forward to continuing to work with you in that space. One of the things that, you know, is outstanding, and I think this is more of a statewide issue, but if we're going to, you know, I think this is the right time to bring it up. I was, you know, spent some time touring one of our affordable housing apartment complexes in Seaside last week and, you know, the conversation came back to, we have our cars system and we know who our most at-risk residents are, who need permanent shelter, affordable shelter, subsidized shelter. And yet, the waiting list for all of the affordable subsidized apartments remains disconnected from our database where we are identifying and prioritizing services for our unhoused residents. And in fact, the waiting list for all of our affordable apartments, you've got to apply to, you know, each one individually and they're each maintained individually. So, we really have, I think, the system is disincentivizing getting people who most need shelter into the shelter that is, limited shelter that is available. That's a broader systems issue that I think we're going to need to lean a little bit harder on moving forward. And then my final comment, I really appreciate the work that you did as a member of the Coalition to put our Lead Me Home Plan update together. I think that the goals and strategies that were outlined in that plan are solid, they're good. You're making progress on moving us forward at the county. But I do have, you know, strategy, and I'll just read the strategy area one, is to increase participation in homeless solutions by leaders and key stakeholders from across the region. And I so oftentimes spend time talking to local electeds who aren't aware of the work that is being done. They care, they'd like to be more engaged, but that annual convening that we've now had twice has really provided us with a chance to bring people to the table, to open their eyes, to open their minds, to help me identify where the champions are within local government. I'm really bummed that we're not hosting it this year. I know it's a big thing to put on. My staff leaned in really hard to get the first one done. We're happy to be of assistance, again, if that's what's needed, to provide the staff support to make it happen. But in the absence of that annual convening, even though we may not have all the answers or the information, you know, we had 600 people who showed up for the first one and it really allowed us to move the conversation forward and bring in new champions. And without that space, it is, this conversation and the work that you're doing sort of falls into these siloed spaces where people aren't aware of it and they aren't able to engage and lean in and ask my city, what are we doing here? So, I would just, I hope that we can hold the timeline that we have identified. I know it's a coalition question, but I will just make, again, my staff fully available to provide support in whatever way is needed to make sure that that event does take place and that it continues to happen, because it's strategy one for how we continue to get this work done. I could talk about a lot of other things, but I really appreciate the work you're doing. And to all of our departments who've engaged with Roxanne and who are supporting Roxanne and the team's work, I just want to say thank you to you as well, the group that we've got here, social services, libraries, emergency management, the sheriff's office, workforce development, public works, Natividad, the health department, behavioral health, C O's office. This is one of those intersectional issues and you can't do this alone, but having everyone be a part of the team is what's going to allow us to move forward. So, I know it's hard, but we really appreciate it and you are making some pretty big impact, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you Roxanne. I want to give you the same platitudes as my colleagues. I mean, I think you're the right person for the job. I worked with you for the last year and a half. You have vision, you're thorough, and most importantly, you get things done. And, you know, I just, it's great to have you there, see you building up a team of, that's going to be able to accomplish even more than you've been able to do, as you started off pretty much by yourself, if you can imagine this, because the homeless issue is not going away. You know, and of course, there's new challenges we're facing as well. And one of them is, you know, is one we've talked about, is it isn't just people living in tents and then under overpasses or wherever it may be, but we're dealing with a lot more people that are living in RVs, people that have some means to be able to get some, something to live in, so they're not living just outside the elements, but no place to park them. And that's, I know is one of the challenges or one of the things that we need to be able to find a way to address in the coming years, and I know you're very aware of that. And I also just want to make a, you know, a comment more of this educational and perspective-wise out as a general thing to the public, because, you know, we hear from people a lot of times who question, well, why are these people homeless? Why can't they get a job? You know, why, you know, why can't they get a house and everything? And, you know, it's, there's a lot of reasons for homelessness, but one of them has been because we are, as a society in the last, well, since 1970s and the 80s, I would say, have put on higher, requiring higher standards for health standards, we're requiring higher building code standards, and a lot of those homes that people used to live in, which we would look at now and just see as very substandard, are no longer out there, are no longer acceptable. And that's fine, that is what we need. There are a lot of old hotels down in Old Town, the Jeffreys, the Caminos, which are long gone, which used to be places for people who were on the edge to be able to live. I knew a guy back in the 70s and the 80s who couldn't drive, he was a laborer, very limited and just, and the jobs that he could get because he couldn't drive. And he lived down there in a room. He was able to afford that by working part-time and he had, you know, cook his food on a hot plate. If anybody knows what a hot plate is, that was like a 1950s microwave without the microwave. But, you know, it was, it's so much better than living in a forest, living just out in the open elements. But, you know, we don't have that anymore, so as we seek those higher standards, you know, for the general society, we cannot forget those who are the most powerless, the poorest, the disenfranchised, those who have been left behind. And I know the works with these tiny villages, that's what you're trying to address. We're trying to, you know, create a better standard. We have a responsibility as a society to step up and since we've taken away those places for people to live, we need to be able to go through and give something in place of that. You know, I think back to my own grandfather, who probably, probably about in his 70s and the 1950s, from the stories I've heard, he lived in North County in a, in a small shack for a few years that had a dirt floor. We'd probably view him as homeless, but that wasn't viewed as homelessness right then, but it wasn't, it wasn't a healthy condition. And so, you know, we've, we have, I just want to point out, we just have that responsibility because these, there's folks that just don't, don't have the same opportunities that everybody else has. And I know that's what you're working for and thank you.
Thank you.
Don't think there's any action we need to take on this, so unless you have any final comments?
No, again, I just thank you all for trusting me with such a very important job and I look forward to the next year.
Well, thank you for doing such a good job, on a very important job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and we'll recess for lunch.
Mic check, one two three. Mic check, one two three.
Yeah.
Mic check, one two three.
Mic check, one two three. Mic check, one two three.
Mic check, one two three.
Mic check, one two three. Mic check, one two three.
Mic check, one two three. Mic check, one two three.
Mic check. Mic check.
Mic check, one two three. Mic check, one two three.
Mic check, one two three. Mic check.
Mic check, one two three.
Mic check.
Good afternoon. I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors. We have the roll call, please.
Yes, good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with Supervisor Adams joining us shortly.
We have the Spanish interpreter services. Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. Seré su intérprete español-inglés, inglés-español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item 18, which is to conduct a public hearing to obtain the residents' views for the public comment period for the Urban County Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Darby?
I'm the manager. Today, we are having a, conducting a public hearing to take residents' views on the accomplishments for the 2324 Community Development Block Grant Program. Receive the CAPER, authorize the Director of Housing and Community Development to submit the CAPER to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the Director of HCD to make minor changes as necessary as directed based on comments received today or from HUD in the future. I do want to note that we did receive one comment from the Housing Authority. On page 18, we had stated that they do not have a homeownership program. They do, in fact, have one. I'm trying to get more information. It was not particularly relevant to that page because really what HUD is looking for there are a report on public housing, not necessarily housing assistance programs that, ownership programs that the Housing Authority operates. But we will be incorporating their comments into the final version of the document. Real quick, the consolidated, the CDBG Urban County goes through a five-year lifespan. We are in the fifth year right now. Just last week, the Board approved the new JPA and cooperative agreement with, with the city partners of Gonzalez, Greenfield, Marina, and San City. So our, our big push over the next year will be developing a new analysis of impediments to fair housing, building off of what was just done for the six-cycle housing element, developing a new consolidated plan, and also coming up with an annual action plan for the first year. And we will be back before you in May with all of those documents for consideration. Real quick, the action plan process began in, in December 2022 when we opened in NOFA and we invited members of the community and organizations to submit proposals for how to use funding. In May of 2023, the Board of Supervisors approved an annual action plan and we began implementing it July 1st, 2023, and it ended on July, June 30th of 2024. And so that's the, the part that we are covering with this report today. Want to note that this CAPER does not cover the $1.8 million in CARES Act funding that the county received. So we've already reported on that in other places. The CAPER, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, is a report that outlines our accomplishments, our expenditures, and how those accomplishments and expenditures line up with the consolidated plan, strategic plan, goals, and objectives. And we also provide cumulative information. There are a number of these programs that go year after year. And so we look at how they do over time as well. Public services is, we're able to spend up to 15% of the annual grant for public services. These are some of the organizations that we've helped. We provided services for children and youth totaling a little, almost 67,000. Fair housing is done through ECHO and the legal services for seniors. We provided 52,250 for that. We also provided food security for seniors through the Monterey Peninsula and Salinas Valley Meals on Wheels programs. Homeless outreach was performed by Interim, Inc., and then we had a few other miscellaneous services for seniors, primarily the Area Agency on Aging and South County Outreach through the Taylor Facility in Gonzalez. The bulk of the funds have to be used for affordable housing, infrastructure, public facilities. We have allocated, we allocated 347,000 to the Gonzalez Community Center, 427,000 for Gonzalez to, or for Greenfield to make some improvements to Walnut Avenue between El Camino Real and Highway 101. There's an elementary school in that area. And so we're trying to make it a little safer there. The Aroma sidewalks, San Lucas streetlights, and Los Lomas sidewalks were all funded. This just gives you an idea of who we funded, how much each of, each organization actually spent. And then I do want to note that any funds that are allocated for general admin or for public services that we don't use in that program year get rolled over and can only be used for affordable housing, infrastructure, or community development projects that support improving communities of low and moderate income. So we, we did roll a little bit of public services money over and we have some general admin that will roll over and will be part of the 24, or the 2526 action plan. We also have the option of funding fair housing as either public service or general admin. We have shifted to funding Eden, Echo Housing out of the general admin so that we can have a little bit more flexibility to fund public services. It also reduces the reporting burden on the service provider because they don't have to necessarily be low-mod income households. So it, it allows them to provide the service to anybody in the community who needs it. So how did we do? The San Lucas solar streetlights were completed. The Aroma sidewalks were completed. The Veterans Transition Center solar program is in progress and that's going to be a partnership with at least the city of Monterey putting some community development block grant funds in. So it's, it's a little bit more involved in, in what we have to do on the front end to, to complete the environmental review because we have to take everybody's funding into account. And Greenfield Commons, which the Board funded in 2019, is under construction and we think it's going to be done probably by June of next year. And that'll be Phase 1 with 100 units of affordable housing. And if, if you want me to stop and go over anything in greater detail, please feel free. This is what Aromas, the project in Aromas looks like. Before we did this, there were no defined curbs, gutters, sidewalks. So this is all in the neighborhood of the elementary school. We're trying to make it a little safer for the kids to get to and from school. San Lucas, again, we put solar streetlights in front of Los Lomas Elementary, trying to make the community a little safer. And then this is Greenfield Commons, which is under construction. This is a modular project, so it's kind of an interesting one. All the buildings are built off-site. I believe they're using a company out of Idaho. They're trucked in and they're just put together like a giant Lego set. They, you know, a lot of the plumbing, a lot of the electrical, they just kind of connect them together. It also means that the city is not responsible for a lot of the building plan inspections because the state takes that responsibility on and has inspectors in the manufacturing facility workplace to, to make sure that the units are constructed to code. So again, today's action, we're asking you to conduct the public hearing on the CAPER, close the public, the 30-day public comment period, receive the CAPER, and authorize us to submit it to HUD and authorize the Director of Housing and Community Development to make any changes as needed by public comments received today or direction from HUD in the future. Again, if you have any questions, I am available. Thank you.
Any questions before we go out to the public?
Yes.
Yes.
I just had one, Darby, and it was, it's reflected on one of the slides, just a couple of slides up. It shows the 22, 2022 success that we had. And then the goal is just about a quarter of that. There we go. Yeah, for the top one, for seniors, just as an example, but they're, you know, most of them are the same way. I would have thought that in 2022, if we did, oh, I see. I thought that, oh, sorry. Aren't we great? I thought we were, that was the 2024.
No, we, we, we've really.
I was wondering why the goal would be so much less in this year.
No, we, we've done a very good job exceeding our goals.
No kidding. No.
And, and it has caused some concern because one of the things that were, for example, we, we fund the YMCA to put on park programs in Paharo. We're only supposed to count unduplicated beneficiaries. So if a kid signs up and plays table, soccer, and flag football, we only count them once. And so we've, we have to go through and make sure that, that they are keeping proper records and only reporting that child once. So.
Well, I'm glad I called it out because you got to brag on it a bit more. So thank you for that. That's it.
So I do have one little question. This is the fifth year, correct? The last year for this?
For the current cycle, yes.
Yeah. So next, next year will be a new cycle.
Correct.
With the new set of funding.
Yes. So the, it's a, we plan on a five-year cycle. And we have to do cooperative agreements on a three-year cycle. So they don't always line up and it's, it's interesting to keep things straight. And then we, we do an annual plan. So next May, we will come to you with a five-year consolidated plan that lays out what we want to do over the five years and what we want to try to accomplish. But we will also come to you with the first year's action plan that we're going to implement to try to reach those five-year goals.
And that, do we have an idea of what amount that will be next year when we come back with that? with that at this point?
Right now, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.2 million every year for five, for, for five years. It's subject to what Congress does. It's subject to Monterey County's in a, in a, in an interesting place right now, and HUD's actually looking at it. Countywide, we are not predominantly low moderate income. And so that may bring down our funding percentage. There are some areas that obviously are, but by and large, the, the county overall is like only 46% low mod, and you need 50.01 to, to really qualify. So, but right now, we're thinking 1.2 million per year.
And that's down slightly from the last cycle, right?
Yes.
Is that because of the reasons you laid out?
Yes. We do, and again, it's also hard to, to know because we're dropping Delray Oaks, which is a small jurisdiction, but we're gaining Marina. And so there's, there will be some changes in how much actually comes in the door because of that shifting.
Right, great. Thank you for that forward look there. Seeing other questions from the board, as do we have anybody in chambers or online that would be willing to speak on this? We have nobody. So we can close public comment. And Supervisor Leho, and then-
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, comment on the fair housing piece. And Darby knows I brought this up before, and there's some things that need to happen. But I, I would just wanted to tell my colleagues, on the fair housing piece, we contract to Echo Housing, which is based, I think, out of Hayward. And I just thought that we needed to have a local service, right? That, that was, that there's nonprofits, organizations here in Monterey County that could provide this service hopefully in the future. And when there's questions, there's an office, a physical space where people could go to if, if, if they need that. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there. I, I know one of our nonprofit providers is interested, but there's some steps they need to do to be able to come eligible to do this. Darby was kind enough to explain the requirements, I think, that HUD requires.
Yeah, it's, if some of it's HUD, fair, fair housing has had a very tortured history in this county. We're on our, our third provider because it's, it, it's a, it's an important service, but it's hard to find a critical mass in this county of people who need it. And so we've run through, locally, we started with the Housing Resource Center, and they just decided they, they were not interested anymore. There was not enough money for, and, and the number of people they were serving was just not, it detracted too much from what their other mission was. We also tried Project Sentinel, which I believe is out of San Mateo County, and now we're on Eden, Echo Housing, which is out of Hayward. The city of Salinas, the city of Monterey, all you, also use Echo Housing. So I'm going to have to try to work with those cities and see if we can't develop some local ability to implement those programs ourselves.
Great. And the reason is because I, I looked at, Darby knows this, I had asked for like the data on what they were doing, and, and I think they came to Paharo when we had a resource fair, and they handed out flyers, and those were all counted as, flyers all counted as visits. I said, we should be doing a better quality service for the community than that. And the phone calls that I saw didn't seem to really add up to even $50,000 worth of, and I think the last year's contract was lower, I think this year's is a little higher. But nonetheless, the goal is to find hopefully a local partner, nonprofit partner. CCA said they're interested. They're willing to train their staff to do that. But they have some steps to do to be able to do that. So there is at least one interested nonprofit. But I just wanted to raise that as a, for us to consider when that time comes down the road. Thanks.
Supervisor.
Yeah, thank you. So just to clarify, we're, we're coming up on the fight, the, where we'll put out a new RFP for services. So I just want to make sure that when we send that information out, that we're not just sending it to those who've historically received funding, but that we're making sure that we're reaching out to all of those additional organizations that would also potentially qualify, just when that, when that time comes.
Supervisor Rudaski, yes, we do. We have a, a distribution list of somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 local organizations that we suggest automatically send it to. We also publish it in the Monterey County Weekly. But if you ha, if you're aware of nonprofits that maybe are small and, and more district-focused, feel free to have, get ahold of us. We can add them to our distribution list so that they get the notices when they're available.
Okay, great. And I know that our Civil Rights Office has compiled a list of local nonprofits that are doing work in the community and underserved areas. So if we could just maybe make sure we're coordinating, we've got lots of lists floating around, but making sure that it, we're, we're getting the word out to the CRO list, our county communications list, and the list that you have in front of us as well. Thank you.
Supervisor Lopez?
Yeah, I just want to compliment you, Darby. Staff asked me to get closer to the microphone, so there you go, Val. The one project I want to highlight, there are several good ones in there, but especially the housing one that you pointed out will be done June 2025. I want this board to know that that project would not have happened without our staff. When that project came forward, it was lacking matching funds, and Darby got creative and found a way to allow them to leverage the funds we had into what turned into after our, we were the first million dollars through the door on that project, roughly. And now that project is a nearly $80 million project happening to house folks in Greenfield. And yes, it's not in unincorporated Monterey County, but it's going to have a massive impact on that community. I've been down there, seen the project at several steps. And again, when we are the seat funding that brings others along, change happens. And I know that this one has been long in the making, but I want to appreciate the folks from EAH who are making that project happen. But I know we were that first round. We were their first yes when they came to town. So thank you for helping and making sure we were at the tip of the spear on that, Darby. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I just, we just want to thank you for the presentation and all the hard work on this. I believe we do need to have a motion on this for-
Second.
Okay, for the recommendations, first and second. And we, all those in favor, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Make a quick comment.
Yes, go right in.
And with, for such a really terrific report, I have a hard time keeping a straight face that you have to refer to it as a CAPR. Thank you.
Move on to item 19, which is, I don't know what number that is. Adopted resolution supporting budget priorities for future discretionary funds for unincorporated areas of Monterey County.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karina Bokanovich from our office is going to make a brief presentation on this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisor. Oh, can you hear me well? All right. Good afternoon. Karina Bokanovich with the County Administrative Office, and with me today is Nick Chullos, Chief Assistant County Administrative Officer. As noted in your report, despite efficient management and stewardship of the county's fiscal resources, the county faces significant challenge due to impacts from inflated housing markets, growing response to emergencies, and provision of ongoing countywide services to the residents we serve. All of these factors have contributed towards straining the county's limited financial resources. In response to these challenges, the board has directed staff to work towards securing funds to ensure service needs can be met through seeking grant funding, as well as a potential increase in the county's sales tax. On June 27th, the board adopted a resolution calling for an election for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the county a measure to raise the sales tax in the unincorporated area by 1%. The sales tax will be placed on the upcoming ballot as a general tax. If approved, a 1% sales tax could generate 29 million annually. Grant funding and potential sales tax revenue could be used to meet county needs. On the screen, please find the recommended priority areas for your consideration. Adoption of today's resolution affirms your board's support of the budget priorities, and staff is available should you have any questions.
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you very much for your precise and concise presentation on this. I just want to be sure that I, that I have my facts right. With this increase in sales tax, we are still among the lowest throughout Monterey County in the, for the unincorporated area of the rate of, of sales tax. Is that correct?
That's correct, Supervisor.
Is there any way that you can tell me, are we the lowest? Or, you know?
In other words, prior to the potential increase, I believe we are the lowest of the local incorporated cities and in, in the county.
And 1% will not take us up to being, you know, one of the more costly?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick correction. I think we are actually tag-teaming with potentially King City as the lowest. Yes.
And do you happen to know, Sonia, if, when we, if in fact that the voters choose to support this, what, where would we fall then as far as other, the cities and the other jurisdictions with their sales taxes?
As things are now, there are quite a few measures that are listed on the ballot. So it truly just depends on whether or not those measures are successful. And some of those include some of the cities that are already above our percentage, and I believe including King City.
King City's got a 1% on as well for vacation in downtown investment.
Thank you.
So it, as of now, we are same as King City. And then again, depending on where the elected, the voters go, it'll, it may vary.
Great. Good. Thank you so much.
Other questions in the board? Supervisor Askew?
Thank you. Um, let's see here. I really appreciate having this come forward. I think it reiterates and reaffirms so many of the things that this board has made investments in. It rates higher than we've seen in a long time. We know that our roads are in need of significant ongoing investment. We know that our water sewer infrastructure systems have, many of them reached the end of their lifespan with through ARPA money. We were able to make some good progress there, but there's more that needs to be done. We know that the county also has many other mandated programs and services that really are delivered by the human infrastructure of the county and making sure that we have employees who are paid fairly and able to make this their home while they're working in service to our residents is important. So support all of that. I did want to suggest, just for clarity's purposes, for clarity, that we make a couple minor changes to the language. First of all, on the portion about parks, I do, I would like to highlight that we are enhancing resident visitorship experience. I think that the, the, the funding that we raise here in Monterey County really should be invested back into the benefit of our residents. So under that bullet, I would love to see resident visitorship added as one word. And then on the, the final bullet where we speak of other essential county services, I think rather than sort of other, the othering of that, I would just say essential and mandated county services. We have many services that we're required to provide, whether that be public safety or eligibility or public defense. Many of those do require general fund dollars to be able to deliver them in the ways that they should be. So those would be two suggestions that I would like to suggest that we make. So on the third bullet, it would be adding resident visitorship, and on the fourth bullet, it would be deleting the word "other" and adding essential and mandated county service program, county services and programs. And then my final comment would just be, you know, I, we have, I think, some really good strategies that we've implemented to identify and to manage our priority investments, our capital budget outlines, the, the capital improvement project list and the road fund. We have really clear priorities outlined in our development set aside and our road fund. And so to the extent that we are able to realize new dollars into the county, I think in partnership with this sort of language, that we should continue to use the mechanisms and the, 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 the systems that we currently have in place to continue making those, prioritizing those dollars if and when they arrive. And I think that this resolution in large parts, with those existing capital improvements and roads funds and county financial policies, would be considered as another input into our budgeting process that our departments are going to be engaging with in the coming months. So, but appreciate the team bringing this forward, and with those two changes, I can fully support it.
So I, I would be, you know, I think supportive of those changes there. I have actually probably some others that I want to add in, but I think I want to maybe bring that up after public comment. I do have a question, though. When we're list, you know, listing, you know, priorities here on the board report, but, you know, it, it pretty much covered your slide you put up, but the board report has a 1, 2, 3, 4. So are we, you know, I know we're listing priorities, but are we prioritizing these priorities? And in terms of, when I look at the board report, it's 1, 2, 3, 4. In terms of the slide, if we could put the slide back up here again, it might be helpful. But are we saying the top is pri, more of a priority than the, I, I'm not quite sure how this is being interpreted here?
This is, sorry. Just to address, you know, one of the things that, as we were putting this, the measure, you know, for consideration by the voters, I think some of the items that we outlined were these very specific county services, and we tried to keep them somewhat in the same order in which they were outlined, and that's how they are presented. In the board report, it just so happened that I listed them 1 through 4, but I think we wanted to just keep it broadly to county services. Just one concern also with Supervisor Askew's addition of mandated. I, when, when we say mandated, I always think of like state mandated. So do we, is it broad enough to make sure that we're, it's not those that are mandated by the state, but those that are, you know, essential to serving our community? Just with the word mandated, I just want to make sure we-
Yeah, I would say essential and mandated. So not just essential mandated, but essential and mandated county services, programs, and improvements, including but not limited to strategies to address housing affordability, reducing homelessness, providing healthcare services for children and vulnerable populations, as well as improved emergency services. So I think that by saying essential and mandated, we're, I just want to make sure we're including all of that that goes along with that. And I wouldn't, when I say mandated, just to clarify my intent, you know, if it's a, if it's a mandated program or service that the state pays for, I don't think that this would override any of our other financial policies and practices that we utilize. I think the county's been really clear in our board adopted financial policies during every budget season, that we don't backfill state programs that are, you know, withheld, like that there's, that we would be using this as an overlay within our existing way that we prioritize and budget. Does that answer your question?
It does. And you actually touched on exactly what my concern was about the state mandated component of it. And so I, that's why I just wanted to just bring it up, that that's, in terms of some of these items that are listed, those are items that are connected to what's coming through the state. And so I, that's the issue of potentially having a supplant.
Yeah, no, I would, I would, and as my previous comments were, I support this because I think we have really good financial policies that do guide our budgeting process, and I would want to ensure that our existing budgeting practices and policies continue and utilizing this resolution as sort of an additional overlay to help guide decision-making and to be really clear to the public who we are and what this board has been prioritizing in our previous and what we intend to prioritize in our current budgets, future budgets.
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. You know, I, I realize each of our districts have different types of needs and such, and I'm, I'm conscious of road repair as an example. But one of the things under park projects, the way this is listed, is, is this to show that we are only going to work on the- we are only going to work on the county parks, lake recreational facilities? Or are we talking county parks, comma, lake recreational facilities, you know, and other, you know, recreational facilities, so to speak? But I would hope that we would not be overlooking the ability to, you know, provide funding for, from this proposed sales tax for places like Royal Oaks or Toro Park or other places where the, the, we have needs that come up that we are not able to afford. I would not want to be, have those constrained based on this language.
In the resolution, it actually includes the word "and." I think we just dropped it on, on that, the screen. But in the resolution itself, it does have county parks and lake recreational facilities.
Thank you. Thank you so much. If we could get that "and" back in here, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah. I think that would be really, really helpful.
And it is. Yes.
Okay. Well, if this goes anyplace out other than just with us, I want to be sure that the public sees that it is the other parks as well.
And could, you could update the presentation slide?
Thank you.
With that, I'm, before we bring it back to the board, let's go off to the public. If we have anybody in the public who wants to speak regarding the matter, and we do not. So we're back here. I, a couple of, a couple of things when I look at this, it's, this is sort of, this kind of, kind of interesting, we talk about road repair and infrastructure projects and repair streets. You know, and being that we're looking at unincorporated, you know, there aren't just as many streets, it's really roads. Okay. All right. I see in the, in the actual, the language we have it down is practice, repair roads and bridges.
Yeah. It's our slide.
Yeah. Okay. Thank, thank you on that. Just wanted to make it a little more rural and less urbanized in that way. You know, and as I, as I look at this, yeah, for me, the two issues that I get in my district really oversize anything else is one, is, is, is the road repair. And there, and then also emergency services. And emergency services down here is kind of thrown in with other essential county services in a way. And it really, it improved emergency services, I guess is what you refer to. And I don't think that really, really is, really is addressing at least in my district. And it depends on what the other supervisors view on there, because I think there's, there's really a, it really needs to be defined in a broader term, and maybe we do inside there. But I think, you know, when I think of emergency services and the issues that I think are really important to highlight, and that there's a real need for the communities, is, you know, it's not just, you know, law enforcement, as we think in terms of the sheriff, but also, you know, fire, 911, ambulance, emergency services, but also animal services, which I think has really been neglected and not mentioned inside here, and I think needs to be really included in the full, full scope. But I, I feel this is such a significant block that it really shouldn't be thrown in here in this sort of catchall at the end with these other services. I do really think emergency services, as I've lined out here, and maybe there's some, something more someone else can add, really needs to kind of stand out in a point of its own.
Emergency response?
Emergency responses, yeah.
Mr. Chair, just to tell our tech team to change on the screen, item 19, instead of showing that we're still on CDVG on the caper.
Oh, yes. Good point. No more capers.
Thank you, team.
The resolution is not spelt correct either.
It's an abbreviation.
Our solution.
Supervisor Church, would that, would, as well as improved, what was the term that you had just said? Response? Would that satisfy your concern?
I think so. I mean, it's mainly, it's, it's, it's really multifaceted, and it, I just really think it needs to be emphasized on its own.
I think emergency, it's emergency management and response.
Emergency management and response is really, is very good for ACES. But I do want to make sure we include in there, you know, 911, we include in there animal services. I don't know if they've been really covered into there.
And so, and you're not using that in reference to emergency management and response? You're, you're looking at that overall?
Response. 911 is part of it.
And, and animal services.
Because that's a, there's a real need, you know, for example, one of the, the great needs is we just don't have animal control officers available on weekends like we should.
And we can add that in parentheses, including animal services and the second item you had.
911, it was?
Sorry about that. Emergency communications.
Communications. There we go. Yes, much better. Any other suggestions?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. So just to be clear, and maybe we could pull this up on the screen. Do we have an editing ability to be really clear about what we're, we're showcasing here? No? Okay. So...
What we want to be doing, and you may want to say this, is that the presentation material should parallel the language of the ordinance.
Yes. And we're making a couple amendments to the ordinance. So specifically, we're editing, we're making sure that on item 3, under parks projects, that the word "and" is in between, in between parks and lake recreational facilities. So we're clear about that. We're adding resident visitorship experience. We're adding the word resident to know we're focusing on a residence. On the fourth bullet, we're deleting the word "other." We're using essential and mandated. So we're adding the words "and mandated," county services, programs, and improvements, including but not limited to strategies to address housing affordability, reduce homelessness, provide for animal services.
I think that would be, what I was asking for is a, is a fifth.
You wanted a fifth bullet with...
Point, with just emergency services.
Okay. So we'll have...
Emergency management and the responses, I should say.
Okay. So we'll have animal services added to the fourth bullet with the rest of the language as listed. And then a fifth bullet...
Animal services would be in the fifth bullet with our emergency management.
Okay. So...
Because it's, it, there are emergency calls that come in for that.
Okay. Do you want to read out how you want the fifth bullet to read?
Fifth bullet.
Okay. Sonia, will you read our fifth bullet for us?
This is not really going to make a difference, everybody. You guys are focusing on the, on the minutia. Focus on, on the real challenge before the voters. They're not going to care about this nitpicking on the language.
I think they're really going to care about emergency services, frankly. I mean, that's, I guess, that's second, pretty big.
Okay. So Sonia, could you read our fifth or fourth?
So we have emergency management and response services, including animal services and emergency communications.
Great. So that's the motion. And I'll just, as I make the motion, I'll just again state that I think we have really solid financial policies and practices in place. And the items that are listed on these bullets are items that this board has shown a strong commitment to this past year and is indicating through this resolution that we will continue to prioritize for investments with additional resources. That'll be the motion. Thank you.
And I'll second it.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
I'm going to, because my, my constituents were excluded from this tax measure. Thank you.
The motion carries for one. And let's see, next, we have new referrals. Thank you, Mr. Sholos. And, Priam. I did ask for public comment, and there was none.
Sorry about that. My apologies. I am, there are, there is a new referral there. And it is related, it is from Supervisor Alejo, and it is referral number 2024 dot 12. And this is related to 1220 Natividad Road Property Repurposing of the County Housing Trust Fund. And there is a second referral, and it is 2024 point 13. And that is also from Supervisor Alejo, and it is related to the Tiny Homes Village renaming for the site that's located in the Watsonville or, or being considered in Watsonville, the city of Watsonville, by, in partnership with the county and the county of Santa Cruz and the city of Watsonville.
Mr. Chair? If I could just comment on that, on the, on the property right on the corner of East Laurel and Natividad, that's been vacant for a long time. This referral was done in consultation with our housing community development team that think they could put that to good use and perhaps generate some additional funding for the housing trust fund. It's not a whole lot, but it would go a long way when they're matching it with other dollars. On the, on the renaming of the, of the Tiny Homes project in Watsonville, I did reach out to Supervisor Felipe Hernandez, whose district that project in is in, Councilmember Eduardo Montesino, whose district that is in, the mayor, Vanessa Curios Carter, and Vice Mayor, who will be mayor next year, Maria Rosco. All agree that, that the name chosen doesn't make much sense in Spanish. It's difficult to pronounce. It doesn't make much sense for a project of this kind in Spanish. And, and that's why I put this forward, too, so that we could perhaps choose a better name that's shorter, easy to pronounce in English and Spanish, that makes sense for the type of project. Names do matter for the providers, for the first responders, for the community, for future fundraising efforts for, for this project. And that's why, before we go too far along, we still are months away from it even being constructed, this is a good time to say, let's, let's come up with a better name that I think would, in the long run, would, would build more community support, as this project has some opponents. I think the name does matter, and we want to get it right from the very beginning. So that's why I did this, I raised this back in April, and it just didn't seem to move. So that's why I had to do a referral to actually get some action on it, on it from this board of supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on that? We can move on to county administrative officer comments.
Just a couple comments, again, to thank our staff and the great work that they're doing out in their community. I did have an opportunity to participate with the housing authority on the vouchers. And just as a report back from Zulika, the housing authority, they were able to, by the reporting of this period, they were able to, of the 1,000 vouchers, to have 727 provided to individuals that were present on that date. It was last Monday. So that's the only update I have today.
We'll go to board comments then. Supervisor Adams?
Glad you called on me first, because I have a significantly light report to make. But I do want to tout Monterey Jazz Festival, which is going to be this coming weekend, the 27th, 28th, and 29th at the Monterey County Fairgrounds. It's always a wonderful experience. And it's, you can still get passes to just roam the grounds, which is a wonderful way to attend if the arena seats are, mainly, there are a lot of seats that have been sold. So it's a great time to get out, enjoy some lovely music, some good food, and I think we're going to have some good weather to go along with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll throw a couple out there first. After our board meeting last week, I ran up to Sonoma, where we hosted the RCRC Annual Conference. It was a huge success. I want to thank our CAO and Assistant CAO for being there. Extremely humbled, his chair, what, one of the annual events is there's an auction of baskets. And the proceeds from those baskets get to come home to the chair, the county of the chair, and be distributed to nonprofits of their choice. The previous record was in the mid 60s. We were able to raise $82,000 for local nonprofits. So extremely exciting. On the night, we actually raised 110, a little over 110. And the balance of that is dedicated, is going to be dedicated to a nonprofit that's mutually shared between Japan and Del Norte County, a city there that was impacted by a tsunami in a mutual year. And so I want to thank our CAO again. She bought one of the baskets. So thank you very much for pitching in. It was a great night, very humbling, and I look forward to sharing more about the local nonprofits that will take part in the, in sharing those proceeds. And another win, yesterday, we were able to light up the communities of San Ardo and San Lucas. We held a small community event in San Ardo to celebrate with both communities with Charter Communications. I want to thank Eric Chatham, Sarah House, and their entire team for bringing that project to life. It was this board who put forward the dollars that were put out in RFP, selected charter, and now those communities have fiber. I asked a kid in the community who had his phone open to run a speed test. He did. He was getting 466 megabytes per second at distance from his house. I get 50, and I think 50 is incredible. For them to have 466 in San Ardo is something else. So I want to thank Charter for their partnership. And again, coming back to Eric and his team, we also had some tablets we were able to raffle off for the community last night. But they did an incredible job of getting this project done. There were a lot of barriers for both the community of San Ardo and San Lucas in getting this done, but they pulled through for them. A big win, and want to thank all the partners in that, including the food bank who rolled out their food truck last night, distributed food. I want to thank the library for opening up and staying open late, Loz fishes and computers, who was onsite, sharing additional resources for the community. But again, your investment as a board through ARPA funding has paid off for that community, those two communities. Also want to share that this last weekend, on Friday, actually, as I rolled back into town from Sonoma, I pulled off on the, the Oro Seco exit, and there was a brand new monument put up. And it was dedicated in 2011 after a pitched fight about the naming of the brand new bridge. But in the end, there was an agreement that changed the county's naming policy for bridges. And it was a mutual shared dedication to the Mission District, this John Soares, as well as all the founding families of the Mission District. So that plaque was dedicated in 2011 and promptly lost. It took me and my team a little over a decade to track it down. We found it in the closet at the American Legion. We were able to pull it out. And Randy and his team, working with Granite, did an incredible job of getting a new monument erected. So now, if you're ever taking that exit, pull over and take a look. As you step out to look at it, you actually gaze upon the entire Mission District and the Oro Seco River. So beautiful spot to have that particular monument set. And lastly, I'll share that I know we've all got a keen interest on the San Lucas water situation that continues to evolve. So know that by the end of the month, there will be some large visits from important folks to the community, finally taking a keen interest. And we're excited to see where it might go. I'm still pitching the pipeline. I know a lot of folks are looking at treatment, but it's, we're in the final moments of a very pitched fight, and hopefully what comes out of this is something the community can afford. That's what we're trying to keep the focus on. And so I wanted to share that with this board, and as we have more news, we'll share it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Alejo?
Thank you. First of all, congratulations, Chris. That's, that's great. And, and our commitment to seeing those communities that have been neglected for too long finally getting the attention and the resource they deserve. So I was really proud to see those photos that you posted yesterday of extending access to broadband to those disadvantaged communities, those families, those people, more importantly than anything else. So congrats. Certainly, there should be more said and written about that. Monterey County is making it happen. More to do, though, in other areas. I did want to just really commend the Salinas Farmer's Market in Old Town Salinas. We, me and my team were out there last Saturday. It's one of the most beautiful farmers' market in Monterey County. A lot of variety of produce, plants, foods, other canned goods, jarred goods. It's a really amazing place. A lot of people come out, dogs and other snakes. There's a lot of things out there. But it was a really good time, and it was a really good vibe. And it was just, I'm proud to see that Old Town Salinas has that there and that they were open to letting us table for a little bit out there. So thanks, thanks to all the organizers for, of the farmer's market, they're even looking to expand, even becoming bigger than what they are now. I did want to just bring up two events. Mary has the Jazz Festival. We got the California International Airshow Salinas this weekend. So we will be seeing lots of jets and planes in the sky. So another great event happening in Salinas. In Mary's district, though, there is the Gridlife, which is our newest car event at Laguna Seca. It's for the younger audience. They do a lot of the spin, wheel spins, and it targets a younger audience out there. But it is, I think it's the last event of the season at Laguna Seca, and it's for the younger folks that are into that type of racing. That's it. Thank you.
Supervisor Askew?
Thanks. Got a handful of things to report back out on. I had the honor of joining the community at the NAACP 52nd Annual Life Membership Banquet with a number of honorees, and I'm just going to call them out again because their work is incredible. Congratulations to Marla Anderson, Ian Oglesby, Bill Manning, Andrea Bailey.
Congratulations to Marla Anderson, Ian Oglesby, Bill Munning, Andrea Bailey, Jake Osborne, Jade Glazier, and John Laird, who were all honored this last weekend at the NAACP banquet. We also had a chance to sing happy birthday to Angelis, whose birthday happened to be that evening. Wahaqah by the Sea was once again celebrated for the fourth year in Seaside, with a large turnout and just a growing opportunity for folks to come together. The CSUMB Women's Leadership Council honored Ruthie Watts, Seaside's own Ruthie Watts, at their annual Women's Leadership Council banquet. And then the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council also had their awards banquet this week, so it's been just like awards and celebrations. I love it. But it was great to see all of our folks from CIU, 521, and SEMA, who were present and celebrating. And then to get outside, I was able to join my son's class at school for the Central Coast Beach Cleanup Day. They've adopted a beach, and so we were out there. We've got a beach tire and the types of trash that is collected at the beach cleanups. Through documenting it every year, we're watching how the types of trash, trash is changing. And so that little micro, like the cigarette butts that we used to collect a lot of, we're no longer collecting cigarette butts, but we're collecting different types of trash on the beach. So that's interesting feedback when you collect it all across the state. And then finally, I just want to invite everyone who's interested in chatting about mental health. We'll be having our Next Wednesdays with Wendy on October 2nd at 5:30. We'll be on Facebook and Zoom, and we've got some of our behavioral health commissioners and other experts who are going to join us to talk about and celebrate mental wellness and mental health resources in our community.
Mr. Chair, I know I was long-winded, but if I could throw in one more?
We'll give you a second shot.
All right. I just, because we needed one more reason to prove we made the right choice this Friday. I will be presenting an award to our very own Sonya De La Rosa at the NAMC Breakfast. Let's give her a round of applause. It's a nonprofit ally of the year. So if anybody's around, please come out and join us.
Great. Well worth it for that second comment. So I want to mention that last Saturday, I was at Rancho Day at the Bronda Adobe with the Monterey County Historical Society, who's holding one of its annual events. Developing things very nicely as they're promoting our multi-ethnic culture, indigenous, Spanish, the Mexican, and American influence in our county. And you can actually wander through their, their facility now and see some of the displays, although they're kind of stacked up still, not, not the best presentation, but it's something you can see, and they have a nice library there, and doing a lot of development into there. It's, it's, it's a great event. If anybody is ever interested, they should really take advantage of visiting there. After that, went with Sonya De La Rosa and members of the Department of Emergency Management Team, and we passed out some checks to the business community and Baharo for the $20 million that the state provided for recovery and making the community a better place. And that was some of the first checks to the business community. There's more going to be coming. Upcoming events, the Elkhorn Slough Foundation is holding an open house this Saturday from nine to four, with food, nature walks, kid activities, and should be, should be fun. It's a, it's a great view, beautiful place. Also, the next day on Sunday is, at Aromas Park, is Autumn Brews, where they're having a beer festival, and lots of fun things. Martinelli's Beer, not Martin, excuse me, Martinelli's and Beer. I'm reading their, I'm reading, reading the flyer. And I don't think Martinelli's is making beer yet, but Martinelli's and Beer and Drinks, let me put an "and" in there. Food Truck and Lawn Games. It's funny, they have the Food Truck and Lawn Games separated, but Martinelli's Beer and Drinks are all thrown together in one phrase. There'll be fun things like the Badminton, and Ladder Toss, and Cornhole, and Giant Jenga, so it should be a lot of fun. And if you get out there early, you can actually go to the monthly Sunday Aromas Grange Pancake Breakfast, which is eight to 11. And with that, I am through. With Martinelli's Beer particularly. So read out from closed session?
There's no reportable action from closed session.
Right, very good. Supervisor Askew, you have a adjourned memory.
Do you have a adjourned memory today? And I think there may have been a photograph sent over to the clerk. If we could put that up. Thank you. Bill Ragsdale Cronin passed away last month. He was a council member in the city of Delray Oaks. Bill's service with the city began on the Planning Commission in 2021, before he was appointed to the City Council in 2023. Bill died on Wednesday, August 28th, at the age of 65, after a courageous battle with cancer. Bill had worked at Monterey One Water for 40 years, where he initially started as a maintenance supervisor. Upon retiring from Monterey One Water, he worked as a maintenance supervisor at Sata Catalina School for seven years. Bill is survived by his wife Susan, their daughters, and his family will be holding a celebration of life for Bill in late November. And just on a personal note, Bill is one of the kindest, smartest, just committed local leaders that we have here in Monterey County, and his, his presence will be missed deeply in all of the spaces that we constantly would see, see him at. So my condolences to his family, and thank you for the opportunity to adjourn a memory.
Yes, and Bill will be missed. I, I sat on a seat, one, two, one seat between us on the Monterey M1W Board, and got to know Bill some there, and really, as you say, a really dedicated servant. Much to my surprise upon his passing, I, I learned through my high school Facebook posts on there, that I saw my classmates mourning his passing, as I realized he graduated in 1977 from Salinas High like I did. But it was a class of 500, so you didn't know everybody. And so, very, you know, coincidental, I wish I'd known that and could have shared cowboy stories with him from Salinas Cowboys, Ice Cowboys. So anyway, we'll adjourn in memory of Bill for this meeting, and see everybody next